Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call please. Bunton?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
Dempsey?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Fournier?
Here.
Krab?
Here.
Mincer?
Here.
Okay, announcements, acknowledgements, communications, reports, including our quarterly department reports, but we're going to start this evening with a proclamation for Luke Graber. If you could come forth please. Stand right by me. How's this? Okay? All right, this is a proclamation. One little thing we did for the city. Whereas the vision of the Boy Scouts of America is to prepare youth in America to become responsible, participating citizens and leaders who are guided by the Scout home and the law, and whereas Luke Graber, a member of the Boy Scout Troop 349, has completed the requirements and received the rank of Eagle Scout on October 1st, 2018, the highest rank in the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas Luke's extensive Eagle Scout project was aimed at resolving the erosion problems along the Clinton River in the area of MacArthur Park in the City of Mount Clemens due to storm water runoff and subsequent rising waters, and whereas Luke raised over $2,000 for supplies and led a group of Boy Scouts to complete the project in August of 2018. Now the area has erosion control Manning and Cor- Coral?
Quarter.
Was it?
Quarter.
Quarter. Quarter. It's a law. Why am I standing here, right? I don't know what it is. The gardeners are here today now. Topsoil mulch and native plants, which has improved the erosion issues, and whereas Luke has decide- decided, whereas Luke also decided that the park could use some additional improvements by adding benches, plants, rocks, creating a border at the top of the riverbank so people can enjoy seeing the water without entering the erosion controlled area. And whereas this was a big undertaking for an Eagle Scout project, Luke serves as an example to the youth through his high level of personal achievement, leadership, community service, and has made the City of Mount Clemens very proud. And now therefore I, Bart Dempsey, the Mayor of the City of Mount Clemens, on behalf of the City Commission and all our citizens do hereby recognize and congratulate Luke Are your folks here today? Congratulations. And now we have another great award, the Snowflake Award. I don't- pardon?
No.
I'll have to, I'll have to talk to you later about that log thing. I don't know who's presenting it. Please come up Kathy. This is the beautification.
I'm Kathy Rollerson with the Mount Clemens Beautification Committee along with Nancy Donahue, Louise Lambert, who is not here, and Junior Quero, and Lisa Taylor, and Cherie Gavie, and Al Shambley. And we'd like to thank the Mayor and the City Commission for giving us this opportunity to present our Snowflake Award for the Christmas decorations. Christmas time's a wonderful time of the year, and one of the ways that we can enjoy it is through our Christmas decorations. And, got to tell you this one thing, in the UK, they call their Christmas lights fairy lights. And I'm thinking, I couldn't understand what that meant. When I finally understood what they were talking about, I thought that was a wonderful thing. It reminded me of Tinker Bell. And so, we just want to thank the citizens of Mount Clemens for their heartfelt and wonderful displays of Christmas lights and Christmas decorations. And along with the 200-year anniversary of Mount Clemens, we have our Snowflake Certificate, and we also have our annual Christmas ornament, and this year we also have a gift certificate for Wiggins Nursery. So we just want to thank everyone for all your wonderful displays. So June, you want to come up? We're going to read off the envelope with the names, and if you can, come on up so we can give them to you.
Ronald and Julie Stabo, 71 Riverside Drive.
Come on up.
Thank you very much.
They actually do all work.
Daniel and Agus Taylor at 238 North Long Island.
I'm here.
Naomi Hammond at 10 inches. Jenny Gettleson at 464 Ingleside. No, Espinade.
Yeah, Esp- oh. That's the Clerk Griswold House.
What do they call the, all the lights?
Jeremy and Samantha Weber at 27 West Brackmeyer Place.
Griswolds. I was going to say the Griswolds.
Nick Polch at 298 North Rose. And Michael Bradley at 25 Gala.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to all the winners and all the people that decorated their house. I did this year, did put a few things out, one, a few bulbs. But, it's wonderful to drive around the city. I think if you had an opportunity to drive around the city during the holidays, it was wonderful to see all the effort that everybody put into their outdoor lighting. Okay, now we're going to go on to the reports.
So we'll start with Brian Tingley from Community Development.
Before, I mean, those of you who would like to stay, please do, but if you don't, if you'd like to leave, you can leave. Because I saw some. Thank you again. Thank you. Congratulations again, Luke. Okay, now we can-
Now Community Development.
In the fourth quarter, Community Development issued 344 building and other trade permits. There were 397 new code enforcement cases opened, 147 rental inspection and vacant property verifications were conducted, 69 rental certificates of compliance were issued, there were 16 new certificates of occupancy for both residential and commercial buildings, and our contractor performed 26 grass and weed cuttings. This quarter, department staff attended meetings of the DDA Historical Commission and a Macomb County CDBG workshop, attended several meetings with city administration regarding the medical marijuana facilities ordinance. We oversaw the fire department roof replacement project, including the CDBG requirements for that, and we worked with purchasing on other bids for upcoming CDG, CDBG projects that are occurring this year.
Any questions?
Has there been an increase in the number of vacant homes, verifications?
An increase in the number of vacant homes?
Yeah.
Over what timeframe? I mean, in the last several years, it's been fairly consistent. There's been a dramatic increase, if you're talking about six, seven, eight years.
Just in the last year.
Yeah, last year, it's been fairly, fairly even.
Normal, routine. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have Sarah Price from the Human Resources.
Okay, at the end of the fourth quarter, the city ended with 68 total employees, 59 full-time employees and nine part-time. We conducted the background checks and the pre-employment process for new full-time employee who just started after the new year. If, right now, we have openings for our dialeride bus driver position. We also are currently looking for wastewater treatment plant crew leader. Interested candidates can check online on www.cityofmountclemens.com under the employment application, or under job opportunities, and find the employment application. The HR office processed seven bi-weekly payrolls, three retiree payrolls, and five miscellaneous payrolls. I participated in several training webinars in order to earn continuing education credits, registered department heads and administrative staff for some training webinars, and implemented training to our FTA-covered employees. We conducted open enrollment to our employees, processed the changes with the health insurance, and implemented those changes into the computer system. We changed over the retiree life insurance vendor, so we had correspondence going out to our retirement population. We successfully settled the dialeride contract and implemented those respective changes. I've met with several retirees who were becoming Medicare eligible and got their paperwork processed accordingly, and just the general information of responding to employment verifications, wage surveys, and general questions. And then lastly, I prepared the Clementines Newsletter, which was created and distributed to all Mount Clemens residents the second week of January this year. And with any addition in the newsletter, the additional copies are here at City Hall or can be accessed electronically through the website. Are there any questions?
Questions? Thank you.
Next, we'll have Leonard Bertrand from Utilities.
See, the wastewater treatment plant treated 368 million gallons of water and completed a major upgrade to one of the three main influent pumps. The wastewater treatment plant also submitted our annual biosolage report, a new pollutant minimization plan, and a CSO notification to the DEQ. The water and sewer crew repaired 17 curb stops, completed 11 main break repairs, and responded to 214 service requests in the quarter. And the water plant pumped 210 million gallons of water and completed a roof on the 59 building.
Thank you.
Linda Coonett from the Finance Department.
Finance Department had a really busy quarter, finishing off the annual audit, processed all the financial statements. The Citizen Guide CVTRS report is on the city's website if anybody would like to see how we compare to other communities. And all the State of Michigan reports were completed and filed. The new annual pension and healthcare obligation reports were filed with the State of Michigan, corrective action plan. We're still waiting on information from the state of how that, their acceptance, and we'll implement that in the next budget year. There were 6,257 winter tax bills that were produced and mailed. The taxes are due February 28th. After that, they're due to the county. Tax payments may be made at the treasurer's office by mail, phone, dropped off at the 24-hour drop box out in the parking lot. There was an average of 2,400 utility bills processed each month this past quarter. 166 properties were delinquent with water bill payments or broken arrangements and were shut off, and it generated an additional $6,300 in fees to have those turned back on. 2019 property tax assessment notices will be mailed by March 1st, so look for those in your mail. There were 1,817 parking stickers sold in the calendar year of 2018, which was an 11% increase over 2017, and the highest amount of stickers was sold since 2013. I thought it was kind of an interesting statistic. And the Park Mobile app seems to gain in popularity. There was an 11% increase of usage from one year to the other, and generated almost $88,000 in revenue. The Purchasing Department was very busy, posted 15 bids on Mitten Cable, the city website, monitored 90 certificates of insurance for compliance, 250 purchase orders, 32 agenda items, and 45 service order requests for building repair and maintenance items. And then the city finally completed the financial software conversion. We have one more training session that's being offered to the employees into the new software program, and I wanted to again thank employees for all their hard work in making this a very successful transition. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
And next, I'm not sure who's presenting from the fire department, but-
It's your favorite captain. How we doing, city manager? Fire Department responded to 807 calls in the fourth quarter. That brings us to 3,511 calls on the year. We billed out for the year. This isn't just the quarter, $21,200 in false alarm bills. In the fourth quarter, we held our annual charity pancake breakfast, we held our annual open house, we completed fire safety talks for all the elementary schools in town, and we applied for grant funding through AFG for radio equipment, through Firehouse Subs for extrication equipment, and through MYOSHA for exhaust removal equipment. Some disturbing trends in the fire service the last couple of years nationally. We've always tried to get firefighter fatalities down below 100. We finally did that in 2017. We got it down to 87. We were excited. I'm told this year it's closer to 80. Unfortunately, what's on the uprise is firefighter suicide. Twice as many firemen today kill themselves and are killed in line of duty, and this number keeps rising. So in order to combat that, we brought on department chaplain, someone from the area. We've had training provided to us, three through the fireworks funding, and it included families so that the families can understand what, you know, the firemen go through on the job, and they can help recognize when somebody's in trouble. Also, free coming up this year is going to be peer training so that the guys on the job can recognize when somebody might be in trouble. Another disturbing trend, not only nationally, but specifically in Michigan, is a rise in fire deaths. Now, we've concentrated on eliminating fires, that was our number one goal, through prevention and education, and we've done that. Unfortunately, the fire deaths have risen. In fact, this last year, 135 people died in Michigan alone. That's up 44% from the year before, and that number keeps rising. Fires are going down, fire deaths are going up. So as always, one of the main things to help people in a fire is a smoke detector. And unfortunately, many homes don't have one, or they don't work. So taking a proactive approach, we had three personnel sitting behind me, Firefighter Busciano, Firefighter Zatchow, Lieutenant Candela, volunteered to form a committee and try to come up with a way to provide fire detectors, not only for our community, but for anybody that wants one. So I'll let Lieutenant Candela come up and briefly discuss that with you.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Can I be your favorite lieutenant?
Sure. Why not?
Good evening, everybody. So with great pleasure to announce, on behalf of the Mount Clemens Firefighters, the start of our smoke detector and carbon monoxide detector program. So as Captain Shipman reported, is that there is an increase in civilian deaths, 44% over the course of 2018 to 19. It was 33% from 2017 to 2018. So even though the number of fires have decreased, the number of citizen deaths have increased. And that's because fires today are burning a lot hotter, they're burning a lot faster, and citizens need more time to escape, and they just don't have that time anymore. And one of the things that can help protect them is having early warning detectors such as smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors. The main mission of the Mount Clemens Fire Department is to protect lives and to protect property. And we do that through aggressive firefighting, training, inspection, and in public education. The first step that anyone can make is to practice fire safety at home and make sure that you have working smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors. So many times we're going to homes and you guys hear that chirping going on, that low battery sound coming from the detector, or sometimes a smoke detector goes off when you're cooking. So you either got to wave the towel, you know, right? Or you just disconnect it. In my home, when I was growing up, that meant dinner was ready. So we would come running and we'd disconnect the smoke detector and we'd sit down and eat. Sometimes we forget to plug it in. When we go into homes today, there's a lot of times that they're not plugged in, or we hear the low battery alarm. So through generous donations from local businesses, organizations, and from private donations from our citizens, we're able to bring to our residents this awesome new program.
I just want to share the contents of the bag real quick. You obviously have, we have a smoke detector, a pack of two. If the citizens are multi-level house or need more than two, they can let us know that and/or a carbon monoxide detector. Also, if they have kids, we can throw in some fire helmets, coloring books, pencils, and also a form that they have to sign saying that they did receive it and their address so we can keep track of who actually got the smoke detectors or carbon monoxide detectors. And also, a donation list and how to hang the smoke detector is very important so they're not going to be blind and they've given these and not having a proper way to hang them. And Firefighter Busciano was going to talk to you about who donated to the program.
So we, when we formed this committee, we wanted to find out, how could we provide this service with no cost to our city? So we looked at the grants out there, but the one specific thing with the grant is firefighters would have to install them. And being that we are at short staff and it's hard to get out there with inspections and everything else, we reached out to the community. And the first people we reached out to was Meyer. And Meyer came out with a great donation for us, and they provided us with the smoke detectors and the carbon monoxide at cost. And then we reached out to all the other clubs, which, around the lovely bag. So everybody who receives one will see that, who donated. And you have the Lions Club, the Rotary Club, the Quanis Optimists, Goodfellas, and Johnson Printing. We also received some private donations from the Randolph family, Commissioner Metzer there, and we really want to make it so everybody who receives one knows that this is coming from our community. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I think you guys are awesome.
Thank you.
Did you, did you tell people how to?
Well, when they come in, they are given directions on how to install them.
Oh, how to get them.
Oh, how to get them.
Right. And is there any qualifications, just anyone?
Yeah, anybody can get them. So first thing you need to do is just reach out to the fire department between business hours, 8:30, 4 o'clock, Monday through Friday. Just say, hey, you need a smoke detector or a carbon monoxide detector, we'll get a bag ready, you can come pick it up. We'll have you fill out a form like Firefighter Zatchow spoke about, and you can take home that peace of mind.
Okay. Great.
Are they batteries?
Yeah, that's actually part of that. Inside this bag, we're going to hand you a whole bunch of batteries too. So you got batteries.
Actually, one of our donations was 400 9-volt batteries.
Wow, that's great.
From a private donor, so.
Great.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Who's your chaplain?
Brian. Yep, Brian West.
Oh, thank you. I-
He was part of that community.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Don't forget, like us on Facebook. We've got our Mount Clemens Firefighters 838 page. Don't forget to like us. We're going to have a lot of information out there regarding the smoke detectors, other tips and stuff for the public safety. And also, we've been working with Pat and Darren from Bass AB and, you know, getting some PSAs out there for people as well so they can see some of that stuff. So we're out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Next, we have Lisa from the City Clerk's Office.
The City Clerk's Office, November 6th, 2018, state general election was a great success. Precincts were extremely busy. We had a 52.5% voter turnout that day. At that election was the passage of Proposal 18-3, which allowed all Michigan voters, it means all Michigan voters are now permitted to vote by absentee ballot for all elections with no reason needed. As a result of that, any voter in Mount Clemens who would like to be added to the permanent absentee list can do so by simply calling the City Clerk's Office. Once on the permanent absentee list, voters are automatically mailed an application for an absentee ballot prior to every election. With the passage of this initiative, there have been many changes to Michigan election law, which our office is in the process of learning and implementing. The City Clerk's Office helped to plan and coordinate the final event for the city's bicentennial celebration, which is the tinsel tour. We wish to thank the over 20 local groups and organizations who helped Mount Clemens sparkle for the holidays by sponsoring and decorating a Christmas tree along the city's riverfront. This event will return again next year by popular demand. As the official record keeper of the city, the City Clerk's Office has been working with testament book bindery in an effort to preserve and restore all of the historical City Commission minute books. So far, six books from the years 1879 to 1900 have been completed for this project. Over the past few months, the City Clerk's Office has processed 1,435 requests for absentee ballots, as well as numerous voter registration requests, FOIA requests, and business registrations.
That's it. Any questions? Commissioner Campbell?
Is that voter, is that the voter turnout, was that up from previous, or?
That was, especially for the mid-year of the state, with the state election. It was as much as the, almost as much as a presidential election this year. So yes, that was unexpected.
I think it was all the-
The proposals that were-
Proposals.
Are there any questions? No? Okay, who's next?
So that's the Public Services Department. Over the last quarter, we have attended several federal aid committee meetings and applied for additional street repair grants, completed the MDOT quarterly reimbursement and employee benefit rate reports, submitted application for TreeCity recertification. This will be the city's 33rd year as a recognized TreeCity USA community. We have begun planning and working on the 2019-20 budget, performed the monthly methane monitoring and DEQ mandated de-watering events of the methane ventilation system. During the fall season, the DPS maintenance crew and sweeper were able to go down every street and clean up the leaves that had fallen in the streets. We installed and removed the Christmas decorations throughout the city, as well as the tinsel tour trees along the riverfront, issued over 1,200 parking citations, generating approximately $108,000 in parking meter revenue, responded to 48 animal control complaints, and transported over 15,000 passengers utilizing the senior shopper and dialeride services. That's all I got.
Questions? Formants? Is that all the reports now?
That's it. That's all of them.
Thank you. They need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Mincer.
Yes. Public participation, this is the time you may address this body. All we ask is that you give us your name, your address, and you adhere to our three-minute rule. So it's open mic.
My name is Junia Quario. I live at 39 Lincoln, and I want to commend the Street Department for getting all the leaves off. I know it was a tremendously late fall, and you really had a lot of things happening and a lot of weather issues, and you did a great job. I want to thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello?
Okay, pull that down. There you go.
My name is Lois Ullitz. I live at 15 Kendrick. I am very honored to be one of your local treasures, and I am a longtime member of the Mount Clemens Historic District Commission. As I look around, no offense, but you're all newbies, with the exception perhaps of Mayor Dempsey and Commissioner Campbell. So I'd just like to take a moment to give you some background, and then I want to ask a question. So going back to about two thousand and three, there was an ordinance that instituted the Historic District Commission, which is one two point seven five oh. So that was two thousand and three, and the Community Development Director at that time was Denise Pike, and she had a history in historic preservation, and like any of us would, she brought that to her job. The ordinance was brought forth, and so the Historic District Commission began. And we, as we got started, it was kind of rough because we were in new territory. We had a local district that was on Lincoln, and we had that for four years, and during those four years, we learned all about how to be a good Historic District Commission. Well, we lost that on a technicality, and I'm trying to be brief here, so I won't tell you all of it. But anyhow, then the next part became getting our status as a certified local government. And during that process, there was a change from Denise to Bonnie McInerney, who was Community Development Director. And it took about four years for us to get that status. I had to keep submitting and resubmitting, and you know how all of that goes, okay? So because we were a certified local government, we could access this pot of money that only other certified local governments in Michigan could access. And at that time, there were only fifteen other certified local governments.
Go ahead. Go ahead. I'll let you go ahead.
Thank you. So we did. We took advantage of that opportunity, and we got three certified local government grants. The train depot, the Transit Museum, was both on the National Register and on the Michigan Register, so they really qualified in the eyes of the funder. So we got three grants from them, from Shippoe. And the first grant was to replace the bricks. And the way the Historic District Commission role in that was, well, of course, you can't just use any bricks. They have to be bricks that match, and so our role in there was to help the people that we hired to, you know, get that part done. The second grant that we got had to do with painting the exterior of the Transit Museum, and the role for the Historic District Commission there was to be sure that it was done right. For example, one of the contractors wanted to spray paint it, and we had had a contract with them that says it can only be put on by brush. So again, the Historic District Commission had a role in that. And the last grant had to do with the roof and putting on roof, the roof for the depot, and again, you know, there was work for the Historic District Commission. Well, there's no longer work for the Historic District Commission, to make a long story short. Over, we were originated in two thousand and three. We, a lot, six other people besides myself worked awfully hard during that time. But now, they're, they're, the group did its work, and it did it well, and they worked hard for you, because that's just the way that they were. But now, there is nothing. Pardon?
The question, you're gonna get to.
Yeah, okay. Let me get to the question.
You're way over.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
So as a longstanding member of the group, and still an active one, we're down to three people now who are part of the group, I get a media, a note.
Notice.
Meeting notice. And on that meeting notice, there is a carbon copy to, I'm gonna crucify these names, but maybe if I just said the first name. Lisa, Jennifer, Carrie, John, Joseph, Laurel, Matthew, Mike, Teresa, and I don't know Jeff, how you got left out of this one, but your name wasn't on here. So I ask, what, you know, what, how come? And the response was, this is, this is new. Well, folks, I was a central office administrator for seventeen years for Lance Cruz, and I don't buy it. My question becomes.
I was gonna say, what is the question?
Is there a process that you are implementing that has to do with the Historic District Commission? And then my comment is, now that there's nothing for us to do, is there a non-acrimonious way to honor the work that the group has done, but yet end the group?
Okay. Brian, we're gonna let you look into that. You're the liaison, am I correct? Okay. Brian, we'll get back with you, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope, okay. I thought you were getting up, Percy. Need approval of the minutes from previous meetings? Need a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes of January seventh, two thousand nineteen.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Menzer.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Okay, general business. Nine A, adopt the Michigan Department of Transportation performance resolution for an annual application and permit for miscellaneous operations within the state trunk line right away. I need a motion?
Motion.
Go ahead.
Move to approve and adopt the attached performance resolution for the Michigan Department of Transportation and to authorize Jeffrey D. Wood to make application for the annual permit.
Support.
This resolution is required by the Michigan Department of Transportation for purposes of issuing the City of Mount Clemens an annual application and permit for miscellaneous operations within the state trunk line right away. It further authorizes Jeffrey D. Wood to make application to the Michigan Department of Transportation for the necessary permit to work within the state trunk line right away on behalf of the City of Mount Clemens.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Menzer.
On page fifteen, on the very beginning, it says, "Equipment will be furnished by Aqua Aerobic Systems with," and this is the, I didn't understand this, "unloading of goods and."
You're on the wrong one. Wrong one, we're on nine A.
What is that? Oh, that's B, sorry. No questions? Good then.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Menzer.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Nine B, request approval of a contract with Aqua Aerobic Systems, Inc., for MDEQ required repairs at the wastewater treatment plant. Need a motion?
Move to approve the contract with Aqua Aerobic Systems, Inc., in the amount of five thousand two hundred, sorry, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and one dollars for MDEQ mandated repairs in the Mount Clemens wastewater treatment plant with the last page correction.
Do I have?
During an annual inspection by the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality in June of two thousand and sixteen, it was found that the sand filters which provide tertiary treatment at the wastewater treatment plant were not in operation. As a result of that inspection, MDEQ has entered an administrative consent order which forces the city to make the necessary repairs and get sand filters back in operation by May thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, or there will be extensive fines and penalties assessed. Due to these time constraints issued by the MDEQ through an exhaustive search, current administration at the wastewater treatment plant was able to locate and receive the attached contract from Aqua Aerobic Systems Incorporated to perform the necessary repairs. In two thousand and seventeen, the city went out for bids and received only one bid at one million one hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars due to this particular type of equipment and type of work being specific with limited companies nationwide that can perform this type of repair.
No.
No. I'm looking at page fifteen, Jeff, and this clause says, it says, "With unloading of goods and civil work if necessary." What do they mean by civil work?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I don't know what, exactly how to define civil work.
Okay.
Civil engineering?
No. I think what it means is the equipment, that the sentence says, "The equipment will be furnished by Aqua Aerobic Systems." Comma, "with unloading of goods and civil work if necessary by the buyer." So I presume they're talking about any ancillary work to, to get this equipment into the plant, that type of thing. It's gonna be our responsibility to do that.
To install, okay.
Well, the installation, but I think the term civil work is, if they, appears to be in this context to mean if there's lifting, if there's, you know, those kind of things. They're not sending out a crew to transport this equipment in. It's gonna be our responsibility to do the heavy lifting.
And probably because we have the equipment to do so at the wastewater treatment.
Okay. Any other questions?
The only other comment I was gonna make is it says specifically that this price is for non-union labor.
One, one point, page five of this agreement, the signature page, I previously indicated, your package has the wrong page five, and there will be a new page five that will be executed on behalf of the city.
This is page two.
Well, it's, it's page five of the agreement. It's a signature page. And if you look at the one you have, there's two bold paragraphs that say there's no warranties. They've agreed to strike those two paragraphs, and we have inserted a paragraph where they're gonna indemnify and hold us harmless from claims, and that either side's claims are limited to the amount of the contract.
It's page nineteen, but it's page five of five.
Right.
Now, take a look. It's page nineteen. In the scheme of things, but the, but the contract is page five of five.
So somehow, they got, the new page did not get inserted in your copy.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Menzer.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Nine C, approve purchase and payments of invoices. Need a motion?
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support.
Any questions? C, non-roll call, please.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Menzer.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Krab.
Yes.
Menzer.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner comments? Oh, manager. Yeah, I guess manager on the same side.
Christmas trees will be collected by the city's refuse contractor on your regularly scheduled trash pickup day through January twenty-fifth. Please make sure the tree is bare and not in a plastic bag when placed at the curb per pickup. The fourteenth annual fire and ice chili cook-off fundraiser will take place Thursday, January thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, from six p.m. until nine p.m. at various downtown restaurants. All proceeds benefit the Mount Clemens Goodfellows and the Anton Art Center. The fourteenth annual Mount Clemens Ice Covering Show will take place downtown on Friday, February first, through Sunday, February third. For more information on either event, please contact the Downtown Development Authority at five eight six four six nine four one six eight.
Any questions? Commissioner Menzer? Oh, no questions. No, you can go first and Commissioner comments.
All righty then. Last Saturday, I went to Artist Music. They had a band that they featured, it was called Brazil and Beyond, and it was Brazilian-flavored music, a lot of really interesting new instruments. I saw a six-string bass, which is unusual, and a seven-string guitar, which is unusual. But they played some Beatles music that got everybody, you know, tapping their feet. They started with Blackbird, went into Deer Prudence, which went into Norwegian Wood, and those are three pretty classic Beatles records. It was a new experience. There were some young kids there that were really having fun, and I commend Artist Music for giving something different and new to the community. It was, it was really great. Here we are in winter again, and the Mount Clemens Health Department is again giving out free radon test kits. Radon is an odorless gas. You can't, it can't see it, can't taste it, can't, you know, can't smell it. It comes up through the soil and can enter basements. They are giving them out free. You just need to go up to the Health Department, right up on Elizabeth here. You can call them at four six nine five two three six and get a kit. They'll have explanations on how to use them and how the results come in. We attended, or I attended and several people here did, the Martin Luther King Day festivities at the, at McEnroe's yesterday, and I just wanted to, a quote that is attributed to him that doesn't get repeated very often, is that it is always the right time to do the right thing. And I just wanted to say two things. I am challenging the Beautification Committee to put out awards for Halloween decorations. We have got some great decorations, some people that just do a fantastic job, and I would really like to see that. I think it would be a lot of fun. And thanks to the MCFD, to our firefighters, for doing a great job over the weekend at a house fire with minimal damage and nobody injured. It is important that we, you know, acknowledge the sacrifices and the efforts they make in the community, and with their, you know, with their skilled training, they were able to, you know, keep that to minimal damage. And I think that their smoke detector and carbon monoxide detector program is a, is great, and I hope you got, you know, everybody takes advantage of it.
Thanks. Thank you. Commissioner Ford.
I would like to publicly apologize to Mr. Woods. I thought Mr. Woods' job was to keep some of our basketball courts clean and put rims and nets up. That was not his responsibility, but he did it anyways. I asked him to put garbage cans out. He did it, never told me. That was not the city's responsibility. I will personally see the people that are responsible for keeping this basketball courts and other things playable.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Fournier.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate again Luke Graber, our Eagle Scout for the project that he did, his commitment to that project. It's very, very encouraging and it's wonderful that we could recognize him here tonight. And also thank you to the Beautification Committee for the Snowflake Awards. That's always enjoyable and we thank you for your efforts there. This week I, or last week, I attended a meeting at Advancing McComb. If you'll recall, Advancing McComb had a, a community meeting last spring that, to get ideas on what they can do to help with, in Mount Clemens. They made Mount Clemens their focus. They are working together with volunteer organizations and asking people to volunteer through their group there that can kind of coordinate projects and make sure, get everything in one place, if you will. So I encourage people to go out to the website and perhaps attend the next meeting or put your name in and they can work with you for some of the places where we do need volunteer help. With that, I thank everyone for attention and have a great evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Bunton.
First, I'd like to let you know that I'm a part of the Retirement Board and the Retirement Board has kept great access to our money. Our money is in really, really good shape. So I want to make that noted. And then I attended also the MLK Breakfast and there was an essay contest. And at that essay contest, there were three, three young people who had outstanding presentations. And I think that if we give them the credit that's due them and encourage them, these young people will go forward and be absolutely great assets to this community or to the world itself. So I congratulate them. I'm not going to try to say their names because they're a little bit complicated. So I'll just say three students. As usual, I like to try to pull up some bizarre and unusual holidays for the month of January. The whole month of January is National Blood Donor Month. And that is a very important thing. And if you ever have had to have surgery and you didn't have an opportunity to donate your own blood, then that blood bank is essential to your livelihood. So if you want to pay forward, you can go and to make donations at local blood donor locations. I don't have a list of them, but I'm sure if you call any hospital, they would be able to give you all of the information that you need. Of course, Red Cross would be able to do that as well. Some of the things to celebrate, January 24th, 1935, beer was first sold in cans. So that's a very important day. Beer can appreciation day is celebrated throughout the country. There is a great aftermarket business for beer cans as collectors cherish beer can history. So that's one thing we can keep in consideration. Another, January 26th, you know what? That's spouses' day. And it's a day to celebrate your other half. Let them know that you appreciate them with compliments, gestures, and other recognitions. And you want to recommend, want to thank them for the things that they do. This is a time, you don't necessarily have to give a present. It's not necessary to do that, but just the kind, gentle things that you can do that don't take money and that don't take anything but your time and your heart. And finally, let's say on January 28th, Fun at Work Day. If you don't usually have fun at your job, today is a day to plan some fun things to do. That would be on the 28th. Be careful, though. You need to clear those activities with your boss so that you don't lose your job just for the fun of it. And Commissioner Wisdom for tonight. I have two little ditties for you. Both are unlisted, so I have no idea who wrote them. But anyway, people who wonder if the glass is half-full or half-empty miss the point. The gas, the glass is refillable. And the other one, when things go wrong, what if everything you are going through now is preparing you for what you wished for? And with that, we'll say good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Krab.
I had the pleasure of attending the first SAT Art Day. And that was put on by the Anton Art Center. It's a free program for families and individuals where they're bringing in different type of art programs. This, and the one we experienced was kind of like a body painting. It was where we went in and actually, Mr. Barnes here dipped his whole head in it. And my family, we all dipped our arms and it was as if we were body painted. And it was really neat and the kids, of course, really enjoyed it. They had black lights set up so that you, you were glowing in the dark. It was, it was fun. And, and it was a neat experience, something new, especially on a cold winter's Saturday. So the next program is February 9th. It is Michigan Opera Theater, I believe. And so take your family or take yourself and you go enjoy a free program through the Anton Art Center. If you need more information, you can call the Art Center or of course, on their website, Facebook page, they have been advertising it. I had the distinct pleasure of being a judge with Commissioner Bunton for the McComb Ministerial Pastors Alliance for their Martin Luther King Junior essay contest. There were 11 participants in the essay contest, one of them who is here tonight. And she did a great job in a very emotional speech. And I'm not sure, like, it was even just hard watching, not wanting to like run up and hug her. She was, all their words were just so incredible. And I just, it was, if you ever are doubting the future of our country and the future of the world, actually go out and talk to some of the youth. Because I know with social media and with media in general, it's really tough to get a feel. But I feel that glimpse, I obviously, I have children right now, but with that glimpse, it was really, it was really incredible. And all 11, if we could have given out 11 scholarships, they would have been more than worthy. It was really, really a great day. And I thank the Ministerial Alliance for allowing me to be a judge. I, of course, attended the breakfast afterwards and it was a really beautiful, beautiful breakfast. I want to thank the organizations and the businesses who supported the fireman's smoke detector program. That is a really exciting thing to offer to the residents. And also the committee of the firemen who put that together. It seems above and beyond the call of duty, so we thank them for that. The, the Eagle Scout who went above and beyond even the Eagle Scout project by really starting with a program to, to work on the erosion, but then saw that the park needed more. And so he, you know, jumped into action. And I think we could all take some lessons from that. So congratulations to Luke Graber. That was awesome. And then the Snowflake winners, we were, that was really fun. My kids really enjoyed driving around the city this, this year. They keep razzing on my husband to put up more Christmas decorations, but he's kind of anti-Christmas decorations. So I don't think that really worked out. But, but we had fun looking at everybody else's lights. So thank you very much for acknowledging them. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
I'm going to start like Mayor Dempsey, now that everything's been covered. Thank you to all the citizens that have worked to make the city a better place. That's it. Thank you.
Like everybody said. I just want to thank all the department heads. I know that many of them are working with not a full staff. And I know it's difficult at times and I appreciate all the hard work that you do. If you heard Sarah's report, there's only 68, what'd you say, 68 full-time employees for the city of Mount Clemens.
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine, or even down more. So I do appreciate all the hard work they do in all the departments. And that brings me up to snow removal, which will be our favorite topic for the next couple of months, I'm sure. They did a great job this last time around. I drove this city the other day because, like I've always told you, I listen to what people say on Facebook. I try not to answer, I listen. And when people tell me that their street never gets plowed, I can tell you, every street was plowed. Even that street that never gets plowed was plowed. There were four cars on that street that were plowed in. So take heed. You don't need a snow emergency to get your vehicles off the street. If you have a driveway, please, when you see the snow coming down, move your cars into the driveway. I listened again and read on Facebook, we don't like to do the little juggle, moving our cars back and forth and around. That's why we leave it in the street. If you want your street cleaned during the next couple of months with the snow, you have to remove your car. So that's my public announcement. Please, take, please. They have a, and if people think it's an easy job to drive those snowplows, it's not. It's hard on the tush, I'll tell you. They're bouncing up and down. It's hard. So they're doing a great job and we need to recognize them for doing that because they could be home, just like we are. But they're out in the streets, taking care of our street. And I heard over the news and from other people who come to town, they know as soon as they hit Mount Clemens because the streets are done. So that's it. End of my speech. Need a motion to adjourn.